Good evening, welcome. I'm Deborah Barker, League of Women Voters President for Buick County. So glad you could join us this evening. We have two forums this evening. We're going to begin with the county supervisor of Districts Two and Three race, and then followed at eight o'clock by the assessor forum that race. So, we're so delighted to have you join us this evening. The League of Women Voters of Buick County is a civic organization. The League nationally was founded in 1920 to encourage informed citizen participation in government and to encourage women to play a larger role in public affairs. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. It is the intent of every candidate forum to provide an opportunity for candidates to present their views on important issues facing Buick County voters. The League of Women Voters pay regard for its commitment to fair and unbiased forums. The League forum rules are designed to continue this respected tradition. You'll have an opportunity to post questions. We'll take them and sort them and offer them to the moderator. The forums tonight are being recorded by BCACTV and will be broadcast in its entirety on Comcast Channel 11 on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 9:00 a.m., and Saturdays and Sundays at 6:00 p.m. You can also view the forums online at www.lwbuickcounty.org. The League of Women Voters will only allow audio and video of the forum to be broadcast in its entirety, except by media reporting on the forum. As the League is nonpartisan, one candidate's affiliation with BCACTV will not have any impact on the recording. No one will be allowed to edit the footage of the forums for campaign purposes. The candidates in the first forum have drawn for order of opening and closing statements prior to beginning of this forum and are seated in the order of the opening statement draw. Each candidate will be given one minute for an opening statement and one minute for a closing statement. Answers to our questions will also be limited to one minute. Each question will be answered by each of the candidates. The moderators may adjust the times depending on time restrictions or complexities of the subject. The audience and League questions will be read by a moderator. The journalists will ask questions directly to the candidates when called upon by the moderator. Because this forum is a nonpartisan setting for voters to hear all positions, any demonstrations of support or opposition to the candidates for their positions will be considered out of order. Any question directed to individual candidates will be discarded because the questions must be posed to all candidates. We will stop candidate questions at 7:45 for the first forum in order to leave time for the closing statements. At the end of this forum, we will thank all the candidates with our applause. Please hold your applause until that time. Then there will be a short break, and then we will begin again at 8:00 p.m. for the assessor forum. If you would please silence your cellphones now. I am pleased to introduce our moderators for this evening's forums, Mary Jensen and Jane Wanderer. Thank you.
I'm Jane Wanderer. I'd like to add one thing to, I think, what Deborah said. I may have missed it. The audience may submit questions on the index cards. Hopefully you picked some up when you came in. If you need some, hold up your hand, and one of the League members will bring you one of the cards. Then the cards, when you have one ready for us to screen, hold your hand up with the card. We'll pick it up and bring it up here to the table. They accumulate the cards. If they're similar questions, we try to put them into one question rather than answering the same thing five times, and then they'll come to us for asking the candidates. I think that's all I have to say. Extra, Deborah did everything else. Another thing I'd like to say is I'm also with the League of Women Voters of California Education Fund, as well as the Buick County Local League. One of the programs the League, State League, has is something called Voter's Edge. You can see the banners up there on the stage. And at the table where you came in, there are some bookmarks that have all the information on how to find that website. It's a free website. We offer it to all on-ballot candidates every election. Just about everybody on the stage has put information up there that you won't hear from them tonight, but if you want to learn more about them, you can go to voterseedge.org, look up Buick County, and you can also look up your ballot and your polling place and that sort of thing. So pick one of these up when you leave, okay?
Assisting us this evening are two timekeepers, Stevie Mittman and Claire Green. They are going to be holding indicators marked with one minute, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and then a red stop sign. Please abide by the time limitations, candidates, so that the evening moves along smoothly. Please let us know now if you cannot see the time cards. Are they seeable? Okay.
Can the candidates see them?
All righty. Okay, gotcha. So, we're on 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and a red stop sign. Thank you. Representing the press for this forum are Steve Schoonover of Chico Enterprise Record and the Oroville Register, and Asia Sturago of Chico News and Review. Here is some information about the Buick County Board of Supervisors and the role these people are hoping to assume. The Buick County Board of Supervisors consists of five members, each of whom is elected from the district in which he or she resides. Each supervisor represents nearly the same number in population. The current annual county budget is $535 million. The office has a four-year term without term limits. Each supervisor serves on numerous commissions in addition to two monthly meetings. The supervisor's salary is $59,284 plus car allowance. Both Districts Two and Three represent large neighborhoods of Chico. You are invited to view the maps as you exit tonight. More information about the district and the scope of their supervisors' responsibilities can be found on the Buick County website. A little bit of information about the votes needed to be elected at this point. The following offices will appear on the primary election ballot, and that includes the ones we're talking about tonight, the supervisor and assessor. A candidate may be elected to these offices if they receive the majority of the votes cast. That would be 50% plus one vote, and could be elected then at the primary election, should they reach that level. If no candidate receives the majority of votes cast in the race, the two candidates who receive the highest number of votes will have their names placed on the general election ballot.
Okay. I think we're ready to start. I want to explain a little bit how this will go. Mr. Wall and Ms. Lucero are... We have feedback tonight. Maybe one of the techs can tell us where to put the microphone. First, we'll have those candidates for that district, District Two, answer questions... I'm sorry, give their opening statements. After they finish, we'll have the candidates in District Three, in the order you see them, Mr. Evans, Mr. Rosine, and Ms. Ritter, give their opening statements. At that point, they'll become one body of five supervisors. They're both... They all sit together once they're elected, so we'll start answering the questions at that time with, I think, Ms. Lucero, because Larry already went first for the opening statements. And then it'll just be this way, and then the next time, the next candidate will start. We plan to finish at about 7:45 with questions, and then we'll start one-minute closing statements at 7:45 to 7:55, after which there'll be a five-minute break. You all have one minute to answer each question. We're going to rotate the questions, maybe one from the League, one from the press, one from the audience, and we'll take it that way. So, Mr. Wall, would you like to start with your opening statement, please?
Good evening, and thank you, Jane, and thank you all for being here, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this. Every time it gets bigger and better, so thank you, thank you again. I have lived in District Two for over 40 years of my life. I'm a product of Chico Schools, Chico State, and I've served in the U.S. Navy for 23 years as a Navy pilot, serving in Comrade, two tours, flying over North Vietnam and Laos. After leaving the Navy, I reconnected with my childhood sweetheart, Mary Fano. We got married, and we opened a business. We began with one store and subsequently grew to three stores in Chico, a local business hiring many college students who needed to work to get through school. And so it was our pleasure to do that for 25 years. During that time, I became involved with the Planning Commission and ultimately the City Council, and now the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Lucero, and I have a long rich history in Buick County. My mother's family goes back to my great-great-grandfather, who had the first hotel and store, which is now under Lake Oroville and Enterprise, and my great-great-grandfather, T.J. Lucas, who had a farm, a large ranch, in Bidwell Bar, and his son also had one. I went to Chico State. I was born here, as were my... My parents also went to Chico State. I graduated with a communications degree and an emphasis in Spanish and also Latin American Studies. My first job was at a Hispanic lobbyist group in Washington, D.C., and then I worked for newspapers for about eight years. I started a business when I was 25, manufacturing futons and selling furniture, and I have three children, and they all live on the West Coast very happily, and I look forward to this forum. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Evans, will you go first? There is something... It must be me.
Mr. Evans?
I got it. Notice everybody starts to talk faster once that 15-second sign comes up. I'm Bob Evans, and I also want to thank the League for this important debate. It's really important for people to become educated on who their potential supervisors are. I am not a local product. I was born and raised in the Midwest, got my college degree in economics, and was off to Texas for pilot training in the Air Force. I spent the next 20 years in the Air Force, retired... Oh, my God, already? Retired as a lieutenant colonel, met my wife in Sacramento, and we moved to Chico to raise a family and go to work. I became the plant manager for a company called Life Touch National School Studios, and for the next 17 years, I ran that operation, and every year, we improved it and made improvements and lowered costs. So that is a great training ground for the position I am trying to get. Stop.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you to the League for having us. This is a very quick election cycle, and as a newbie to the running an election, I can't believe how fast it's gone, and I really appreciate you hosting us tonight. My name is Norm. I grew up in District Three. I went to Pleasant Valley High School. I went to UC Davis, went to UC San Francisco School of Dentistry, came back, practiced dentistry, started a winery, served two terms on the Buick County Airport Land Use Commission, started Jet Chico, which is a group trying to bring back commercial air service, helped found the Chico Air Museum, which is an air museum out at the airport. And the reason I'm running is I just don't like what's going on in Chico. I think things have changed for the worst. I think we need to make some changes, and I think we need some new leadership to do that. Thank you.
My chopped liver? I appreciate the League having us here tonight, and I take the League's encouragement for women to get involved in public affairs very seriously, so I really appreciate this opportunity. I'm a 20-year resident of Buick County, and I have about 20 years working in the social services. I'm the founding executive director of the Torres Community Shelter, the past executive director of Habitat for Humanity of Buick County, a former alcohol and drug counselor, and I've previously provided offender treatment services for three years. I have two master's degrees, one in counseling and one in restorative justice, and I was elected to the Chico City Council in 2012. I served until 2016. I currently work as the Director of Family Court Services for Glen County Superior Court as a professional mediator and a child custody recommending counselor.
Okay, we'll start the one-minute answer questions with Ms. Lucero, and the question is one from the League. Mary?
There is currently a general concern for transparency in governmental affairs. How do you believe this issue affects Buick County?
Well, one issue that I know of is that currently there is no way to tell how supervisors, board of supervisors even, vote on any given subject. The only way you can do that is to dig through the minutes and look through those minutes, and then go down each one and see how they voted. One of the first things I would like to do is transparency for a trans... Excuse me, transparency concept, is get this, it's the digital age. Let's have some kind of glossary, and in that glossary, you can tell how every supervisor voted, whether it's a land use issue, whether it's septics, whether it's on the environment, whether it's on the dam, whatever it may be, whether it's on the green line. This is a good place to start because then it makes it easy for the public to go in and check it out and determine how our elected officials are representing us.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Well, my experience is mostly with the city of Chico, which I don't think is much different from the county, as being on the City Council and currently on the Planning Commission. We all follow the Brown Act rules, which mean you can't have meetings outside of a quorum of, or a majority of the members of a board or council, and I know the county also does that. However, during a recent incident in the city with... Behind closed doors was brought to light with the movement of the Jesus Center, and certainly the press is here to make sure that transparency is always part of the process, and I have no doubt will be called to order if, in fact, those rules are violated.
Mr. Rosine?
Thank you. I hate to agree with Bob, but Bob's exactly right. The Brown Act is there for a reason. It's there for a purpose. We need to avoid any appearance of not being transparent. The recent City Council meeting that had a problem is something that needs to be avoided. I think the county does a good job. I think you can look and see how people vote, but I do agree that everything that we do for the public should be out in the open and be part of the process.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter?
So, regarding transparency, the area that I see that is the most critically important is the budget. And when working with the city of Chico, there was a lot of work that was done to revise the way in which the budget was provided to the counselors and available to the public. And I would like to see that same process take place on the county level. Currently, when you try to look at a county budget, you have to look at multiple documents because there are multiple places that show what funding sources are coming from where. And so what I would like to see is, I would like to see all of that information contained in one document that's easy to read, just like the cities have implemented.
Thank you. Mr. Wall?
Transparency is a shared endeavor. It requires the work on all of our parts, not just the county or the city, to provide transparent notes or minutes, which are all available online if you don't happen to watch the actual meeting in progress. You can pick up the minutes at a later time. You can look at our local newspapers. They frequently have the major items with the who voted what in them, and it's a responsibility that citizens need to take upon themselves in the area of transparency. We provide transparency in all matters at the county. We're very good at that. All five of us agree that transparency is extremely important. The budget is transparent, and it comes out in June and is available for everybody to read. It'll be online, it'll be in the local libraries, it'll be in the county buildings, and if you want to look at it, you can certainly do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask if the audience have cards that you want to have picked up with questions or you need some cards to fill out. Please raise your hand.
If you just really want to hear the last question?
Oh, the question itself?
Yeah, so it might be... It's going to be louder. We're having a little bit of microphone trouble. If you... Would you raise your hand if it's not... You probably don't want it louder, I don't know. Okay, we'll try it. This is a question from an audience member. When budgets are fully allocated to existing programs, the questions about new programs are answered by, "What do you want us to stop doing? Is there anything you believe the county should stop doing?" Did you hear that? Is that okay?
Okay, the first one to answer will be Bob Evans. Help, where's my sound people? Anyway, you have one minute?
So let's back up, and the response to that question asked of a supervisor is pretty germane. The county is on a very, very tight budget. In fact, it's getting tighter as the year goes on. Revenues are going up, but expenses are going up faster. So, if you want to add something new, you have to eliminate something bad, or that's less of a priority. My top priority is public safety, and that's on the police or sheriff and the fireside. I believe that should be where the priority is for any government, and in order to facilitate that, I'm really going to have to dig through the piles and the departments to see where a less prioritized item can be eliminated without hurting people. I don't have a specific answer at this point, but that's one of the things I'll be looking for.
Thank you. Mr. Rosine?
Yeah, it comes down to prioritizing every single item in the county budget. Right now, we're pretty much bare bones. Where do you cut when you've already cut so much? So, I would take a long look at the budget, and I would... Some programs, maybe you could cut them back. I don't know if you have to eliminate a program to gather another program, but perhaps you can reduce a program and make it more efficient. I think with technology, we can do that sometimes, and gain some money from that program by using technology and use that saved money for a new program or an additional program.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter?
I don't suggest that we cut any programs regardless of whether we want to add new ones. I think that what this comes down to is collaboration, and that we need to be making sure that the cities and the county are working together. If there are programs that are being duplicated or services that are being duplicated, then we look at trying to eliminate those duplications and just streamline the services.
Thank you. Mr. Wall?
I think when it comes right down to it, it's very difficult to cut an existing program that has been approved by not only staff, but by the five members of the board and many members of the community. The budgets will grow and will expand, and as we get new money, more things can be added. However, you look at the library, there's one that is seesawed back and forth, going up and down. It depends on what money needs to be placed where. Public safety obviously gets the first crack at money. The other ones will take second fiddle, and any new programs will join the queue to be placed when it's their turn.
Thank you. Ms. Lucero?
Well, I think we need to look at the efficacy of programs. Right now, there is an enforcement program with cannabis, and there are large liens being leaned on properties that are found to be in violation. They have... There's about $2 million in liens, but last year, they only collected $168,000 of those liens. What I'm wondering is, are there other programs like that that we can look at the efficacy of these programs? How much is it costing us to do a program like that? And then from there, look into the other parts of the budget. There might be hidden pots. It's very tight. I've been looking at the budget myself, but it really all goes back to, how effective are those programs? Looking at mental health, how can we collaborate? I agree with Ms. Ritter. You know, we need more collaboration between the city and the county. The county should be front and center on the homeless issue with 51% of its budget towards health and mental health services.
Thank you. I think now we'll take a question from each of the press, so we'll have two press questions in a row. Last forum, we didn't really get enough questions to the press. I like reading your articles afterwards. So we'll start with Mr. Schoonover of the Chico Enterprise Record.
Just for the record, the county had come up with something that sounds like what you're looking for, Ms. Ritter. It's called OpenGov. I believe it went active today. It's an interactive thing that you can basically scroll down through the county budget. It's pretty cool. My question concerns what Ms. Lucero brought up, the county's program to control marijuana grows. I'm interested in your views on how that is done, the philosophy behind it and all that, but for the record, the county does not enforce its marijuana growing rules through the criminal courts, but rather through zoning ordinances. A grow that violates the ordinance is declared a public nuisance, and then they can collect fines on it, and they do place liens on them. They amount to tens of thousands of dollars, and they've had as many as 15 of them in a single meeting to approve. So again, I'm just interested in your views on that program.
Mr. Rosine?
Yeah, I've been to the meetings where they had 15 hearings, and it was a long, long meeting. I think what was stated was that everybody knows the law, okay? The law has been put out there for over a year, and still we get people violating the marijuana ordinance. I think that what the supervisor said at a meeting last month was, "We're not going to do this next year. Next year, you understand the law, and we're going to hold you accountable for the law." We have laws for reasons, okay? We're a society of laws, and I think we need to enforce the law. I agree with the ordinance as it's written right now. I think it's doing a good job. I think it's trying to keep people from growing more marijuana that they use to sell, not for themselves, and I think that I would support the current ordinance as it's currently written.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter?
Yes, I think that the current system of making it a land use issue over a criminal issue is smart, and I think that that's moving in the correct direction. What I don't like about it is that there is no consistent enforcement, even as a land use issue. When we observed those 15 hearings that took place, there were some people who got three-month extensions. There were some people who were immediately the lien was going on their property. And when one of the supervisors inquired as to why certain people were getting longer terms than others, the response of another supervisor was, "I don't feel I should have to justify my answers." So, I think that it's really critical that we have a policy that works and that it is enforceable and it is consistent.
Mr. Wall?
Over the past six and a half years, we've gone through many iterations of the local marijuana, both medical and recreational laws, to conform with state law and try to conform somewhat to federal law. It's been very difficult, but six and a half years later, here we are. We have the unanimous consent of all five supervisors that the way we're doing it now is as good as we can get it. It's balanced, it's collaborative, it's an ordinance that it is working, and we're going to give it time to work. We're going to review it next month to see if we need to make any changes, and I, for one, don't see any changes to be made. The way we go about collecting money and imposing liens is as fair as we can get it. It's in accordance with state and federal law. So I support staying where we are on this issue.
Ms. Lucero?
Well, as I said, my real question on this particular item is I'd just like to know how much it costs. I haven't seen a cost and expenditure sheet compared to what we're bringing in and what it's costing us. And if it's getting down to, "We're bringing in $2 million, but we're only bringing in $168,000 in revenue," maybe we need to review that.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
I really think that the county's being smart in the way they're approaching this. If we wanted to do criminal prosecutions and involve the courts and involve lawyers, it gets very expensive, it gets very muddy, it gets very dragged out. Using land use is clean, it's effective, it does what it's supposed to do, and that is keep a limit... Keep a regulation that allows small grows but not commercial grows. So I honestly think land use is a very smart approach to this problem.
Thank you. The next question will come from the Chico News and Review.
Okay, this thing's on, just checking. All right, here's my question. As you know, California is experiencing a housing crisis right now, and the county's not immune to that. What are your ideas or what are your solutions to addressing that, and how... What role can the supervisors even take on? Should there be flexibility with the green line? Should there be flexibility with the green line, or should it be a rigid demarcation? Thanks.
Yes, so we're going to combine the housing and green line question. I'll just hit the green line part first. No, we shouldn't move the green line. As far as what we should do to address the housing crisis that we are facing in Butte County, I think that the first thing that we need to do is we need to make sure that our continuum of care is as strong as it can possibly be. One of the things that is currently weakening our continuum of care is the legislation that the City of Chico enacted that criminalized homelessness, things like the CITLIE ordinance. Those things are not approved by any housing organization anywhere in the country. They're seen to be detrimental to addressing homelessness. They criminalize homelessness, and they don't help. They end up costing jurisdictions more money. So, I think it's critical that, as a community, we say these kinds of policies are not beneficial. They're costing us $50,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and I think that that's the first thing we need to do, is reverse those kinds of policies.
Mr. Wall?
The California State Legislature has imposed a lot of regulations on us that make building housing very difficult. One, just recently, yesterday or today, added the requirement that in two years, you'd be putting on solar and solar storage capability into your homes. That's going to add another $12,000 to $20,000 per home. The price of the homes here in Butte County is already approaching $315,000. And the reason for that is there's not enough land being utilized for building for homes. We need to make more land available. I don't support changing the green line, but we need to find other areas where housing can be done. The county is working on this, and the city will need to annex housing as it becomes available. The other thing is the tiny houses. Tiny houses can work for transitional living for those who are willing to make a go of it and move on to new housing. We don't have enough time to house everybody, but we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lucero?
Well, I agree. Tiny houses, single occupancy places for residents. I think we need to go up in Chico and not continue to spread out. We are running out of land, and I am a protector of the green line. I absolutely believe in the green line. If you've ever seen it, it's super jagged, and there's a reason for that. It was a political battle 40 years ago. And it was difficult to get that land into conservation the way it is, or into farmland. So we need to be creative, and we need to look at the housing changes. People are wanting different types of housing today. Millennials want to live in apartments. They don't want to live on one-acre lots with a house. So, I think it's a combination of being smart about what is new and what is needed and what millennials would like, you know, what is the new housing going to look like, and also utilizing our existing space, infilling, going up.
Mr. Evans?
So it's interesting that state finally realized that we have a housing shortage. I think most people realized that a long time ago. In fact, in Chico, if you take all the permits, all the plans, all the developments, including Marion Park and including Stone Gate, which hasn't even started yet, if you have put all those housing units, they add up to about 3,200 houses, homes. The demand estimate based on the general plan is by 2030, we're going to need 17,000 homes for growth. And there's another estimate that comes in at 7,000 plus. Either of those means, we still need more, we need double the houses we have. Larry's right in that, I got to go fast, don't I? There's not enough land available to build all these homes, and when there's a scarcity of land, the price of land goes up. I do not want to avoid the green line. We need to protect that. But some of the other boundaries that are encircling Chico probably are going to have to be looked at.
Thank you. Mr. Rosine?
Regarding the green line, I'm a strong supporter of the green line. I have an ag business myself. I live on ag land. We need to protect the deep soils of the green line, and I think it's done a great job, and I think we're all in agreement. We've answered that question at four different forums, so I think we know what we're doing. As far as housing goes, we need to find land. It needs to be probably marginal grazing land, the poorer soils of the region. We need to make that available, and we need to look to the state and say, "Look, you guys keep adding regulations that add to the cost of housing." The mean housing price in California right now is $550,000. Less than a third of the population can afford that. So something has to give. And here locally, I think if we could free up some of the marginal grazing lands that aren't good for agriculture and make it available, then that would do a lot towards solving our housing crisis.
Thank you. Now, we'll have a question from the League of Women Voters, and after it's read, the first person to answer will be Mr. Wall.
In your opinion, what are the outstanding problems facing the county, short term and long term? And what personal priorities do you place on dealing with them?
Short term and long term problems facing the county is public safety. We've seen our fire department shrink in size. We need to try to get that back up. We've seen our police department pretty much, or our sheriff's department pretty much stabilize where it is now. Yet there's pockets of the county, particularly up in the mountains, that are not served well, or not served 24 hours a day on some days. We need to work on that. Housing is one of the other big issues that is a long term and a short term. We need short-term housing for people who are on the edge. We need long-term housing for everybody who comes here. And again, that's a function of land use. The land is available, and we just have to have the willpower to go after it and make use of it in a way that satisfies requirement for homes for low, middle, and upper-income folks. We have people moving in from, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Ms. Lucero?
Yes, I really think the budget is very important. We are facing a budget deficit, I believe, in the next budget cycle. And so the first question that went to, "Well, what would we do without?", I think that's why we have to look at our services and the way we're doing things. I think we need to be smarter about how we're doing things. I think we need to look at collaborative efforts between the cities and the county. I think we need to look at a regionalism, perhaps. We've gone to Cal Fire in the county on fire. We may need to look at some innovative ways to partner with the cities. City of Oroville is looking at going bankrupt. How are they going to protect their citizens? They just annexed a huge part to their city. So, we're all in this together. If one city goes down, it doesn't bode well for the county. So we really need to figure these things out, and it's going to be through the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Well, Ms. Lucero actually hit it. The budget is a big issue, because even though revenues are going up, expenses are going up faster. And the county predicts that there will be layoffs at the end of, before the end of the year, which is not the position anybody wants to be in. But just as they're doing, while they're trying to squeeze more out of every employee, the states come in and added more burden to the county. So the state putting more mandates on the county, and they've upped the requirements for administration and reporting back to the state. So, it's a double-edged sword. Our revenue's not going up fast enough, and the state is really putting much more demand on the county with mandated programs, which I hope I get a chance to talk to before this evening is over.
Mr. Rosine?
The budget is looming over us, so that is a short-term problem that we really need to deal with. Public safety, both from a fire and a crime prevention and dealing with crime, is huge. We need to try to maintain our staffing at levels that are appropriate and will work. Homelessness is an acute problem right now. When I go to different seminars and talk to people, they're all asking me, "What are you going to do? What are you going to do?" Long-term growth, the county's going to decide where the city grows. That's the way it works. We're in control of the land outside the city. Are we going to grow south, north, east, along 99? Where are we going to grow? The county's going to play a huge role in that. And economic development, we haven't talked about that at all. We need commercial air service in Chico. That's one reason I'm up here. If we had commercial air service, we wouldn't have lost the Google Loon project. We wouldn't have lost the Facebook presence in Chico. We're losing tech companies that would come here and bring good jobs that can help our economy, and that's what we need. Thanks.
Thank you. Now we have a question from the audience. I don't know. Please don't take it personally. Ms. Ritter?
Again, extra 15 seconds. So I'm going to go through my priorities. Obviously, that's the things that I think that are facing the county that are the most dire. The single greatest thing that I think that we're going to need to deal with as a county is water policy. It is going to become the single biggest issue in the North State. There is a grab right now for the North State's water, and unless we implement policy that protects us, not just now, but into the future, it is going to be the biggest issue. We need to deal with our housing crisis. Homelessness has a direct impact on our law enforcement, so if we implement housing-first policies, we free up law enforcement to deal with the legal issues that they are meant to be dealing with. The last is emergency preparedness. We need to make sure that our communication systems are in place before the next emergency. We saw how critical that was last year, and we know from some of the drills that we've done this year that there are some gaps, and that we need to make sure that, as a county, we are prepared.
Thank you, and my apologies, Ms. Ritter. Our next question is one from the audience. After that, after it's read, Ms. Lucero will be the first to answer.
Is there enough water for new large developments? What is your general view on water and water transfers and droughts, and transfers as in quotes?
Well, I think Tammy just hit the nail on the head. You know, water policy is going to be critical. There is a new state policy that is forcing counties to work together through Sigma, which finally, the state figured out that water doesn't realize when it's crossing a county line. And so we are becoming more educated about our aquifers. We still don't know how groundwater recharges, and so some of these things are going to be critical in the next four years. As for transfers, my understanding is that Butte County is like a swimming pool, and we live in the shallow end of the swimming pool. The deep end of that aquifer pool is in Glenn County. So we are going to have to work together with other counties. We are going to have to be regional, and this gets back to what I really, truly believe. We are going to have to start being more regional to make effective change for the future.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Well, it's hard to say anything different, but the water issue is and will be critical. Sigma is a program that the state has come down with, and the good news is they've left it up to local authorities to determine how to implement it. It basically says, "Come up with a program that says you are not drawing any more water out of the ground than is being replenished through natural replenishment." So, everybody's looking at those programs. A couple things, water transfers. Butte County, a long time ago, put in a law that says, "You cannot sell your surface water to downstream users and then replenish it by pumping." So, the county's been very smart in that regard. There is water that belongs to Butte County in Lake Oroville, and I know there is some exploratory programs going along, how we can use that. There's enough water there to water the whole city of Chico throughout the year that we just aren't using because we have no conveyance set up to take advantage of that.
By the way, we will let the candidate finish his sentence, even though the stop sign has gone up. No extra sentence, just finish the one you're on. Mr. Rosine?
Yeah, so water is our most precious resource, and everyone else in the state wants our water. Sigma's going to help. It's going to define the aquifers and what we need to do to make them sustainable. We do know how groundwater recharges. It comes from the sky and it goes into the ground. We need to preserve that and understand it so that we can better map it and create sustainable groundwater plans that will work, okay? I will fight for water transfers. I won't fight, I will protect against water transfers because it is such a terrible thing that the state is moving our water, our only natural resource that they really want, away from us. And we must protect against that, and we must fight against it. And that's why we need supervisors that can react and act at the state level and lobby for urban, for rural interests against the urban interests. I haven't heard anyone talk about that, but this is really a rural versus urban situation, and we need to continue to fight for rural interests and not let the urban interests take over.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter?
So the question was, "How do I feel about transfers, and is there enough for new developments?" Yes, there's absolutely enough for new developments. The use of the water that we need to be concerned with is the water that's being transferred to water orchards and plants that are growing south of the Delta that should not be growing south of the Delta. It is not appropriate places for us to be having those kinds of crops, and that is going to be the single biggest issue. Yes, Sigma will help, but what Sigma is going to determine is who gets a seat at that table. And right now, when you talk with the ag community, they are currently the ones that will be represented. And my belief is that every single one of us, every single one of us is a water user, and every single one of us should be represented on that board.
Thank you. Could you hold your applause, please? Mr. Wall?
You know, groundwater belongs to the owner of the property above it, and in Butte County, we don't transfer that water south. I, I'm very concerned when people talk about, "Well, we can sell water south." It just is not something we can do. We can't afford to do that. The tunnels are a bad idea. The county has opposed them. The board has unanimously forwarded letters, along with other counties, to the governor's office, to the legislature, trying to prevent the tunnels from being built. I do support Sights Reservoir. We need more water storage up here. If we have more droughts, we're going to need more water. We have water in Oroville that could be used here in Chico and elsewhere, but the conveyance is not available right now, and we don't have any means of getting it over here. So, the water, Sigma is just a management tool to keep the state from deciding how our water is going to be used.
Thank you. Now we'll take a question, just one question from the press. We'll do the Chico News and Review, have a couple more questions from either the audience or the league, and then do the Chico Enterprise Record. So, Ms. Ragra?
All right, I have to keep remembered attorney on. So my question is, what is your stance on the Machu Picchu tribe's proposal to build a casino?
Okay, this time, we start with Mr. Evans.
Well, I wish it weren't so, but they have all legal right to do it, according to the courts. And I think the county is, needs to stop fighting it because at this point, it's going to be a waste of money. My personal opinion, we have enough casinos around that we don't need another one, but I don't think the county ought to be fighting their tribal rights to do what they want with that land.
Mr. Rosine?
Yeah, we've, it's been settled in a court of law. I think we've spent enough time and money on it. I do think we have enough casinos, but they have a legal right to do it. And I think that if they're going to go forward, the best we can do is try to do some good planning and avoid traffic issues and avoid the issues that might surround it as far as other issues. So, I think we're going to watch it develop and see what happens.
Not sure how different these answers are going to be. I believe that the county has spent enough money fighting this project, and they are a sovereign people, and they get to build this project if this is the project they choose to build. What I would like to see is, I would hope that there would be a willingness to work with the county on finding either a more appropriate site or trying to mitigate the issues that are going to come up, not just in terms of where they're going to get water and how the waste is going to be worked out in that particular area, but there's also a lot of law enforcement issues that come about with the construction of casinos. So, I would love to see, you know, perhaps a task force or a group from the county that is working directly with the tribe to help them mitigate those issues.
Thank you. Mr. Wall?
The Butte County Board of Supervisors has firmly agreed not to continue the legal action against the Machu Picchu. After having spent somewhat over $800,000 to this point on a futile effort, on a futile effort, we are now moving into the next phase, and that's working with the Machu Picchu to make sure we get as good a project as we possibly can, whether they build a casino, whether they build a hospital, whatever it is. But we need to work on access into that land. We need to work on the water and where it will come from, how their sewer and other things will be taken care of. But we will be working closely with the tribe to, to accomplish all of that over the next few years. And it will take a few years to get anything done. They need to find a financing agent and then proceed from there. So, things are on track. The board is firmly, firmly on, on track with the next phase of this endeavor.
Ms. Lucero?
I also agree with everything that's been said. The Machu Picchu are a sovereign nation, and it's taken them many years and a huge court battle to get here, and so, I wish them well, and I believe that, as Mr. Wall said, we look to the future and help with the infrastructure needs. And if they're like the other tribes, I'm sure that we'll have a good working relationship with them and could mitigate, hopefully, any issues that would come up.
Thank you. Now, we'll have a question from the audience, and the first person to answer will be Mr. Rosine.
Homeless individuals have consumed most cities in California and the West Coast. Affordable housing is the most dramatic singular factor. What ideas do you have to help Chico and Butte County?
I think I agree with a lot of the people, both at the city level and the county level, that are looking at developing a comprehensive program to deal with homelessness. It's going to take behavioral health people, it's going to take law enforcement, it's going to take the target teams, the crisis intervention teams. And as far as the housing goes, I think the tiny homes are a part of the solution. I think CHAT is doing a good job with what they're trying to accomplish. I think it's time for everybody to get together and work in the same direction. For the last several years, we've kind of had this group and that group and this group and that group trying to find a solution on their own. It's not going to happen that way. It's too complex an issue. It's eating up a lot of budgets. It's eating up, as you said, a lot of cities. We need to deal with it, but we need to do it together, and we need to move forward together on that.
Ms. Ritter?
So, I think that the first thing that we need to do as a community is to be offering Housing First. If we offer Housing First options and low-barrier shelters, we are going to directly affect law enforcement, who are not the appropriate entity to be responding to housing and homeless crisis. We're going to alleviate the burden on hospitals as well as our courts. The Greater Chico Homeless Task Force has been in operation since 1998, and they have been coordinating services within Chico since that time. Since the federal emergency shelter grant and the Emergency Housing Assistance Program have been restructured, we now have the Continuum of Care, another countywide organization that has been working for years and years to coordinate homeless services. So, I think we have all of the agencies that we need. What we need to do is we need to be getting the full funding for our continuum of care by getting rid of policies that criminalize homelessness.
Mr. Wall?
There are some 50 groups that are working on this problem throughout the county and particularly in Chico. Homelessness is something that's been talked about for many years, and it's finally coming to that point to where people are gathering together and saying, "We're going to do something." I support the move of the Jesus Center to a new location so they can be an entry point for more services, take care of more people, and be less of a problem for their neighbors on Park Avenue. I support the tiny house concept, as long as it's run properly, managed properly, and the people who are allowed to be in there are, are well-screened. I've seen it in action in Portland. My sister and I up there visited their, their shelter up there in, in Portland, and it worked, worked very well. And this has been several years ago, so I understand the ones in the local areas are working well also. The, the Homes, the Homes for People.
You're so good. Okay. Ms. Lucero?
Well, I, this is a very concerning problem to me, and I really do believe that the county should be front and center on this issue because it has the resources. The Department of Behavioral Health Services is a $67 million department, and I believe that we could be coordinating in a better way. The continuum of care, even though it's designed to bring everyone together, I have yet to hear people who are actually in the field believing that it works well. Many people say it does not work well. We need detox centers. We need mental health facilities. We need to work on a 24-hour place just right here in Chico that can take someone who ends up going to our local hospital who has a mental illness. We don't have anywhere to take them. We don't have a 24-hour facility here that, well, we do, but they are not going to respond. Now, we do have a new crisis mobile unit, but it's only operating from 8:00 to 6:00.
Mr. Evans?
Well, homelessness is a very, very tough issue. It's very complicated. The reasons for being homeless are varied, and hence, the solutions, there is not a solution. It just has to be a whole variety of efforts chipping away at, at all the edges for the reasons that people are homeless. And Larry's right. There's many, many organizations out there that are now working on this problem, and not just government agencies. Private citizen groups are working on, on helping to raise the issue and the solutions to homelessness. I agree with moving to Jesus Center, where, where more services can be given to a greater number of people and instead of trying to find them all over, all over the place. I, I believe that housing is an integral part of the solution. Where that housing is going to be is, is a tough decision, because I think most people agree that housing, it should be an integral part of the solution, and it says, "Stop."
Thank you. Now, a question from the Chico Enterprise Record. Mr. Schoonover?
Couple weeks back, the supervisors approved sending a letter to the governor and the legislature opposing two of the sanctuary laws that were in effect, basically because they contradict completely with federal law, and it was putting law enforcement and business in a position of having to either choose to violate federal law or choose to violate state law. The comments from the public at the time were of two types. One said, "You, you don't need to do this. The state, the state law is just fine. You're all a bunch of racists." The other few was, "You need to go farther. You need to join the lawsuit that the federal government has undertaken to, to overturn those laws like, like Orange County did." So, my question is kind of a Goldilocks question. Did the county go too far? Did they not go far enough, or did they do the right thing?
Once again, the Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to approve the letter.
Oh, Mr. Wall, Mr. Wall, I think it's Ms. Ritter.
Oh, my apologies. Just too anxious to answer the question.
I should have said that before I let him read the question. Okay, Ms. Ritter.
That, that doesn't count as my opinion, okay? All right. So, there are lots of incidents that we're going to see where the state law and the federal law are, are not the same. We can look at one of the earlier questions regarding cannabis or, or policy around that. And so, I, my personal position is that because our law allows that if there is someone who is a violent criminal and they are arrested, that law enforcement can already work with immigration, I absolutely support sanctuary.
Now, Mr. Wall?
I do not support the sanctuary. It's in strict violation of federal law. But, the Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to send that letter off to the legislature and to the governor's office. And the reason being was that we did not want to get involved in the lawsuit that Orange County and San Diego County and now other jurisdictions are entering into, because it could prove to be extremely expensive, and we're not a county, a county that can afford to do that. What we did is make our voice heard, and we did discuss becoming, becoming a friend of the court, filing an amicus brief at some point when it's appropriate, and that time is not yet, but we will have that discussion in the future. The sheriff has a very difficult time walking that fine line between federal and state law, so he has made the decision to post all releases of the jail on the web, on our sheriff's website, so that ICE, if it wants, can come pick up the folks when they are released.
Thank you. Ms. Lucero?
I was there for that vote, and I was very disappointed that our county, which is an agricultural county, who depends on migrant farmworkers to pick our crops and to be in our fields and who have lived amongst us, that they would vote to do this. I, I was very disappointed. When the sheriff came up to explain, he said that they arrest about 12,000 people a year, and of those, 34 people in the jail were illegal during that year. 34 were illegal aliens, and of those, 11 were deported. That didn't sound like a huge issue. I was wondering if, oh my gosh, is this a, a big issue? Is this something we need to be worried about? But instead, we have literally put out an unwelcome sign. And, and if you talk to farmers, it is impacting our county. It's impacting our agricultural well-being, and it's our number one industry. I don't agree with it at all.
Mr. Evans?
Well, I agree with Larry Wall. I don't agree in sanctuary city or sanctuary state. I think it's, it's counter to federal law. More importantly, it puts our sheriff and all law enforcement in a very, very tough position. It's a damned if you do, damned if you don't. They can be, they can be charged with violating the law, either from the state or the federal, no matter which way they step. Sheriff Honey's taken a very prudent and, and, and safe way to address the problem, but he's probably the exception in law, in law enforcement across the state. One thing I find interesting, and, and the author of this sanctuary state is Senator Kevin De Leon. He came out with a statement that said, "Local communities and counties cannot choose which laws they want to enforce, which state laws they want to enforce, and which state laws they want to oppose." I find that rather ironic since how he has made that statement between the state of California choosing which federal laws they want to, I can finish the sentence, right? Which federal laws they want to obey and which federal laws they want to disregard, because they don't like them.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Rosine?
Yeah, we, we are a nation of laws, and we have mechanisms to change those laws if we don't like them, but we have to follow the laws while they exist. I don't agree with sanctuary cities or sanctuary states. I think it's a mistake in that you do put your law enforcement personnel in this impossible situation. I've talked with Sheriff Honey directly about this, and that's exactly what he said. It's like, "If I do this, I'm in trouble. If I do that, I'm in trouble." He has two masters. So, I think as a Board of Supervisors, you have to put your sheriff, who is your chief law enforcement person, in a position where he can be successful. And if we're going to have this nation versus state tit-for-tat kind of going on, well, we need to address it at the level that we can address it and not put our local people in a problematic situation.
Thank you. Now, we'll have a question from the League of Women Voters, and when, after the question is read, we'll start with Mr. Wall.
Do you find that all-- Thank you. Do you find that all residents of Butte County are adequately served by existing transportation facilities? And if not, what remediations would you give priority support?
No, not everybody has what you would say is adequate. Some people have cars. Some people ride the bus. Some people walk. Some people ride a bike. I don't think any of them are a perfect solution. There needs to be a very good mix. Automobile is something you choose to have if you can afford it. A bus ride is something most everybody can afford to do if it works with their schedule. Unfortunately, bus ridership is very low in this county, and it's also very, very highly subsidized, even though there's a requirement to, to meet certain fare box minimums in the bus traffic. Bicycles have a great deal of latitude in where they can go, and they do have improving bike lanes and thoroughfares through town, but it can get better. Walking is relatively safe in this town, in this county, for those who live within walking distance of their needed destination.
Ms. Lucero?
Transportation, I think, goes hand-in-hand with affordable housing, and I would like to see our county working on, again, collaboratively with our cities to create affordable housing and transportation concepts. Reading was the recipient of one of the largest grants in the state. They got a $20 million grant to build an affordable housing complex in its downtown, and it was because of the transportation element. So, I think that we really need to be creative about this and, again, be collaborative, and we can do that with our cities. I'm totally for biking. I want to throw this out there. Some people have said, "What are we going to do about those Nord apartments and all the increased traffic? What about not having freshmen and sophomores bring cars to Chico State?"
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Well, I think it's almost impossible to have everybody served equally, because we have such a diverse locations. Forest Ranch, Cohasset, the public, the public service for their transportation is totally different than what would be in Chico or Orville, for that matter. I do support bike lanes and, and getting people out of cars. I live pretty close to the Esplanade, near Chico High School, and that, that has become just such a bottleneck and a scary situation for those kids who have to cross the Esplanade to go to school. So, yes, I support alternative methods. Get out, walk, bicycle, and public transportation. I think public transportation right now is, goes to where the ridership is the highest, because they certainly want to make sure that those buses are utilized the most. So, I can't argue with that.
Mr. Rosine?
I think we need a mix of transportation techniques and methods. Different people have different needs. I strongly support bike routes. I went to college at UC Davis, which is the biking capital of the world, and everybody used their bikes there. So, I like that idea. Chico's relatively flat. It works. I do think we need bus service that can get people to where they want to go. I'm going to take this opportunity, again, to talk about the airport and, and air transportation. 680 people a day travel down to Sacramento via car or bus or shuttle to fly out of here. Okay, that's a lot of traffic we put on the road when, if we could attract a commercial air carrier, which is very doable, we could have airline service, we could attract professionals with that airline service, we could service tech businesses, and we would get those cars off the road, which is one goal of transportation.
Thank you. Ms. Ritter?
In addressing public transportation, I, I think that when we talk about bike lanes, we're talking about something different. When we talk about public transportation, we're specifically talking about buses, and public transportation is overwhelmingly used by individuals who are either at or below the poverty line. And there are a lot of issues that BCG is aware of, particularly with individuals with disabilities, the hours that buses run, the last, the last route that a bus takes, transportation on weekends. I served on the Social Services Transportation Advisory Committee, and basically, if we can't get ridership up, then we can't add more, more buses and more routes. And so, it's kind of a, it's kind of a problem that perpetuates itself, because if we don't have convenient times for people to get on the bus, then people aren't going to ride it.
Thank you. Now, we'll have a question from the audience, after which the first person to answer will be Deborah Lucero.
Do you support an independent funding source for Butte County Library?
Yes, I support any funding source for Butte County Library. I wish that we had created an endowment 20 years ago for the library. That's something that Shasta County did. The Friends of the Library, I think it's, it's a good way to go. I think that citizens need to be more involved. I would hate to see any public funds taken from the library, because I think the library is an important source for many of our neediest citizens. So, I absolutely support any kind of funding source, but I wouldn't want to see government pull back its support because there was some other funding stream coming in.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Whatever the source, we need to support our libraries. As Deborah said, it, it's critical to an awful large portion of our, of our communities. And every year, it seems like there's a tug-of-war between the city and the county and how much they're going to allow the library to have or can afford to let the library have. to have or can afford to let the library have. And then we're talking about shortening hours and days closed. An independent source would be awesome. I don't know what would make that up, where that would come from, but if we could come up with an independent source of money that would allow the library to become stable and open to all the people who need it all the time, that would be a wonderful, wonderful answer.
Mr. Rosine?
I'm a big believer of public-private partnerships. I think that if you combine the public money that the library gets with a very active nonprofit that would help support the library, I think that is a way to go. I think that the library is such an important asset, or the library is an important asset to the county, that with maybe a little bit more marketing, a little bit more pizzazz, we could do that. I would use the Chico Air Museum as an example. We started with a bare patch of nothing, no airplanes. Now we're going to see 10,000 people a year in visitors because you had a highly motivated group of people moving in the right direction at the same time. I think the library is just ripe for that, too.
Ms. Ritter?
So a public-private, kind of like Friends of the Library, I absolutely would support an independent funding source for the library. It's a county service and thus a county responsibility. But I think that the county library does an excellent job at what they do. I think that they have some of the most long-term and longstanding volunteers in this community. And it's an organization that everyone can get behind. And it's serving people from, you know, preschool age in the kids' section up to seniors and everyone in between. So yeah, I support Friends of the Library and I support the county continuing to fund the library.
Mr. Wall?
As many of you know, and many of you have participated, library's been a passion of mine for many years, ever since I was a kid would be down there on Saturday morning when the books were first put on the shelf by the librarian. The library, since the Carnegie days, have evolved from a research center, a book checkout place, to a myriad of services, which should remain in the public realm. It's a public building and a public place that should be funded by public money. The library does more than rent books now. It has computer stations, it has learning stations, it has 3D printing. It has any number of things and it's a valuable place for people throughout the community to go. It's a place where you can go and look at this county budget. The Friends of the Library are the independent assistants to the library in buying books for the library. And that will continue into the far-reaching future, I'm sure. Thank you.
The next question, it will be the last question. Time runs out really fast. It'll be one from the League. And when the question is read, the first person to go will be Mr. Evans.
What is your opinion of Butte County's current emergency response plan? What additional steps would you propose to ensure the safety of Butte County residents?
Well, in light of the crisis we had in Orville and the Orville Dam a few years ago, I know all those emergency response plans are being reviewed and updated as we speak. There's another emergency response area that needs attention, and that is for our communities in the foothills and the fire dangers that could devastate them if, well, if it happened to happen in our foothills. We just went to a meeting here a week ago or two weeks ago of the fire response up in Forest Ranch, and those people are well-prepared, very knowledgeable of what they're supposed to do in case of a fire. One of the problems that's happened is that since pot and marijuana grew in the foothills, a lot of the properties and escape routes have been fenced off. Sierra Lumber Company, who had many roads to escape from, have fenced off all those escape routes. So there has to be another look at our foothill properties to make sure that they have the proper avenues to get out in case of an emergency.
Mr. Rosine?
Yes, so I'm Vice President of the North Valley Animal Disaster Group. I can tell you that Butte County is one of the best-prepared small counties in the country based on what we did after the Orville Dam incident. There were meetings, there were discussions, there's been drills like the one at Forest Ranch recently. Okay, I don't know about communications, but we have calm reserve. We have some very, very excellent people working hard because they understand, because of the wildfires we've had and because of the Orville Dam incident, what they need to do. Having more drills is useful. NavDAG's having a drill this coming Saturday. We need to practice. We have evacuation plans for all the foothill communities. They're very current. What we need to do is take a long look at fire routes out of Cohasset, out of Forest Ranch, and maybe use whatever funding we can get from the state, because the state is putting us in a lot of this fire danger, to develop some alternate routes. So those areas are not limited by evacuation route problems.
Ms. Ritter?
Yes, I do think Butte County has a good emergency plan, but some of the issues that exist are things like, we learned at the Forest Ranch evacuation drill, is that if you don't have a landline, then they're using a different system than the reverse 911. There are lots of people who don't have cell reception up in the foothills. And that same afternoon that I went up to Cohasset, that we did the drill in Forest Ranch that morning, I spoke with a Cal Fire person who told me that the logging roads have changed so much and they have not had an update in their fire plan, in their evacuation plan, in eight years. That's too long. And so that's the kind of thing that could cost a life. So when I'm talking about communication systems, I'm also talking about when we did the evacuation last year, people had less than an hour to get from Orville out of their home. And so I want to see the countywide communications increased.
Thank you. Mr. Wall?
Butte County has an excellent Office of Emergency Services run by a senior staff person. We have Orville Dam and Paradise Dam procedures that are coming into place based on the recent incident last year. We have hostage situation training through the Sheriff's Department. We have, of course, the fire issue, and we have mutual aid with all of the local fire departments, and we have aid from up and down the state and across the country for fires should we need it. We have procedures in place to house, to feed, to take care of the off-duty firemen when they do come to Butte County to fight a fire. We have a very good and very capable staff that manages this and it gets into place immediately upon the inclination of a major disaster of any kind. So you picked a disaster. Our people are prepared for it.
Thank you. Ms. Lucero?
Well, I would agree that there are a lot of good plans. I, too, have some concerns about communication just because of what we saw in Santa Rosa and Sonoma, just people not having the same codes, the reverse calling, all of that. But one of the things that I have been thinking about is the fact that in Butte County, Chico is the largest city, 90,000 people. In the county, there are 80,000 people in the unincorporated parts of the county. How do we successfully get those people out when there is an emergency? That's a lot of folks. So, you know, think about the number of people that we have here in Chico, and then think about trying, you know, hopefully, obviously, the disaster will be in one area or another. But we need to start thinking about building codes and where we're building homes and how we're going to service those homes.
Thank you. It's time for the closing statements. They drew to see who would go first for closing statement, and it will be Deborah Lucero, followed by Larry Wall, followed by Tammy Ritter, then Mr. Rosine and Mr. Evans. So we'll start with Ms. Lucero.
Okay, thank you. So this is the first time I've ever run for office. I have worked alongside the county for many years, doing economic development, arts, culture, tourism, ag speed dating, just about everything you can imagine, working with the county. And I truly love this county. And there are a lot of really great people who work for the county. We had the privilege today of going on a job shadow with the District Attorney's Office, and that was awesome, to see all those hard-working people and the stacks of things that they're doing. What I'm really concerned about is defending our green line. I believe in the next four years that will be broken if I do not get in office. I want to protect our water, improve healthcare and human services, do something about homelessness, which I think we can do and the county needs to be front and center on, which will create quality of life and safer communities. So I am about safe communities. I'm just coming at it a little bit differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wall?
Thank you, and thank you for being so attentive tonight. It's been an interesting batch of questions we received. And one that we didn't get was, why are we running for supervisor? Well, I'll tell you why I run. It's about public service. It's about service to my country, service to my community. I've been involved in public service since I was an Eagle Scout in the Navy as a pilot. And when I got out, I became involved in public life here in Chico, serving on the Planning Commission and the City Council. I also serve on the Salvation Army Advisory Board. Was there during our Capitol campaign when we built an Adult Rehabilitation Center with 50 beds for recovering alcoholics and addicts. I serve on the Butte Humane Society and I'm a member of JET Chico, as Norm leads it. It's a matter of serving the public, helping constituents get through the bureaucracy, get to the right people to do things, including fixing sewers on a Saturday night, including...I'll stop then. But you get the idea.
Okay. Tammy Ritter, please.
Hi. I'm Tammy Ritter, and I'm running for supervisor because I want to continue to be a public servant. I want to continue to serve the public in a way that is accessible and that I am available to people and able to listen. As a professional mediator, I am well-versed in sitting in conflict, and I think that sometimes the decisions that have to be made for the county are hard decisions. And I think I can do that with a level head and objectively. I am the only District III candidate who was endorsed by the current District III Supervisor Maureen Kirk, and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Rosine?
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone again for being here. It's nice to actually have a group to talk to. And she's laughing because often it's three or four people. Yeah, how about that? Mom would be so proud. I'm running because of mom. Mom doesn't go downtown anymore and mom doesn't go to the park anymore. Things have changed. And I think public safety is a big issue. Homelessness is a big issue. We need to solve those challenges. I'm supported by the Butte County Sheriff's Association. I'm supported by other law enforcement. I think that I can make a difference in working with them and trying to solve some of these issues. I'm the only candidate that has an ag background. I'm the only candidate that grew up in Chico. Chico's my hometown. I want us to be good as a community, safe as a community, and do the very best we can in everything that we do. And that's why I'm running.
Thank you. And last, Mr. Evans?
You know, there has to be something about that military background. When you're in the military, you live in a lot of different locations, but the problem is you're always on the outside. You're never part of the community. And you look, you see them on television, they're making decisions that affect everybody, but you really can't be a part of it. When I retired, since then, I have been deeply involved with Chico, and it just comes from the fact that you want to serve, you want to continue to serve. I've been on the City Council. I'm currently on the Planning Commission for Chico. I've been a Rotarian for almost 25 years. I'm the president of Chico Community Scholarship Association. This year, we're giving out almost $200,000 worth of scholarships to local area high school kids. And I've also been a founding member of Hooked on Fishing, Not on Drugs, which is coming up a week from Saturday, folks. I hope to see you out there. I love this community. Safety is my highest priority. I think it was a mistake when we shut down Fire Station 42, and I will work my hardest to keep safety at the top and provide the other services that are necessary to run an efficient county. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
They do indeed deserve our applause, don't they? More information about these candidates and others throughout the state can be found on the League of Women Voters Edge website. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Butte County and BCACTV, we thank the candidates for participating in the lively forum this evening. In a moment, our county supervisors' forum will be adjourned, and after a five-minute break, we will begin the candidate forum for Butte County Assessor. In the meantime, we'd like to invite the candidates for a photo op back here in the corner. And again, thank you so much. And I think we could applaud again. Okay. (applause)
Can we please have the audience sit for the next forum for the assessors? Thank you. We are live on television right now, so we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. If you have questions, please submit your card by holding the index card up, and we'll retrieve it. I guess we better get started. I don't have her script. You want to read her script? We're waiting for Mary Jensen, my co-moderator.
Do you want to mean a question for?
That's a good thing. Is this what they call a TV timeout? I guess so. Sports fans will get that joke. If anybody wants to ask a question of the candidates, if you would take a card that we have here, if you don't have one, hold your hand up, we'll bring you one. If you've got one prepared, raise your hand with the card, and someone will come and pick it up. Do I introduce the candidates first? What's first? That's your turn. Welcome to the forum on the Butte County Assessor. Assisting us this evening are two timekeepers. They are holding indicators marked with 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and a red stop sign. We're asking the candidates to please abide by the time limitations so that the evening moves along smoothly. Candidates, please let us know if you cannot see the time cards. Representing, she's got him. Representing the press for this forum are Steve Schoonover of the Chico- We have someone else. He is much younger than, than he walked in. You got an A on that. That was really- Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Laura Urseny with the Enterprise Record.
The Enterprise Record, I'm sorry. Thank you, Laura. And then we have Asia Sharaga from the Chico News and Review.
Thank you. Some information about the Butte County Assessor role. It's a four-year term of office beginning January 7th in 2019. There are no term limits associated with this. The annual salary is $128,688 effective as of October. There are 40 employees in the office. The assessor locates and identifies all taxable property in the county, establishes taxable value for all properties subject to property tax, completes the assessment rolls showing the assessed values of all properties, and applies all legal exemptions. The assessor's office keeps track of ownership changes, maintains maps of parcel boundaries, updates property descriptions and physical characteristics, maintains files of individuals and properties eligible for exemptions and other tax relief, and analyzes trends in sale prices, construction costs, and rents in order to estimate the fair value of assessable property. The assessor does not establish tax rates, calculate tax amounts, or collect taxes. The following offices include assessor, and they will appear on the primary election ballot. A candidate may be elected to the office of assessor if he or she receives the majority of the votes cast at this election, 50% plus one vote. Did you want to introduce your-
Specific qualifications?
Do you have the one on the certification?
First, let me introduce the candidates. We have Randall Stone. They drew to speak, who speaks first, who speaks second. Mr. Stone will speak first, and Ms. Brown will speak second. I have a little bit more to say, but the candidates for county assessor first have to be certified with a special, which I don't have my notes, a special certification that they must take a test and be certified to be a county assessor. If the candidate who is chosen does not already have that certification, they have up to one year to get that certification, and in that time, a temporary assessor is appointed. Am I correct? No?
You're incorrect. It's 22 months.
Oh, 22 months.
From this election, yes.
Oh, 22 months to get that certification.
Correct.
Is that correct? Do you agree, Ms. Brown? Use your mic, please.
They're issued a temporary certification until they get their, their permanent one.
There isn't a temporary appointment.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I got, that's why I don't have my notes with me. Okay, we'll start with a one-minute opening statement by Mr. Stone, followed by Ms. Brown, and then we will start taking questions from the audience that have been sent to us up here at the desk, also from the League of Women Voters. They will alternate between the press as well. So, Mr. Stone, you may start. You have one minute.
Well, good evening, and thank you all for being here, and thank you to the League for hosting these forums. They're an important part of our democracy and an understanding of a race like the assessor. I've lived in Butte County for the last 24 years. I'm the husband and partner to Krista, who, we've been together for 18 years, and we are raising our four-year-old son Reese and our 24-day-old son Carden. Otherwise, my wife would be here tonight, as she typically is. I'm a 14-year owner and operator of a financial planning firm, a professional financial management firm. 13 years as a real estate developer, over a decade as a real estate broker. I literally teach this topic at the university to graduating seniors, where I obtained a Bachelor's in Finance and Economics, as well as a Master's in Public Administration focusing on municipal finance and land use policy. I currently serve on the Assessment Appeals Board, which is the arbitrator between taxpayers and the assessor's office. And I've mentored under the best of the best. My father is the county assessor in Santa Clara County, where he's held that job for the last 24 years.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, one minute.
Thank you. I'm running for assessor merely because I'm not done. I accomplished a lot in my first term, but there's still other things that I want to accomplish, and I won't be able to get them done by the end of my first term. I've been in Butte County for 35 years. I've been married for 39. I have a 36-year-old son and three grandchildren. I've worked for the office for 34 years. I started at the very bottom, worked my way up to the top position, and I believe I still have more to contribute, which is why I'm running again.
Thank you. First question will be one from the League of Women Voters, and we'll start with Mr. Stone.
Proposition 13. Proposition 13. Will give us a microphone someday. Proposition 13 provides limitations on an increase on a property. What about decreases due to market swings or environmental changes? And the examples given are a fire or the Orville Dam situation.
Fire and calamities, you, you can apply, and I, the assessor's office has just now changed that the application isn't necessary for the fire calamities. It's something that she did accomplish in this last term. It's low-hanging fruit. And there are opportunities with Prop 8 reductions when the market drops. Proposition 13 limits the upward movement of property taxes, but Proposition 8 allows the drop below the high-water mark.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, Prop 13 puts limitations on the increases. Prop 8 requires us to lower values when the market drops. During the height of the recession, we had over 30,000 properties under Prop 8 review. We're down to about 10,000 now because the market has increased. So, as far as the calamity ordinance goes, we did have the first reading of the ordinance yesterday. What it allows for is on governor-declared disasters only. It will allow us to go in and do the calamity relief we need to without the owner having to file a calamity claim. So, it allows for a much more efficient process.
Thank you. I think now we'll go to the press. Ms. Urseny from the Chico Enterprise Record, if you have a question.
Both of you have given reasons on why you're seeking this office. Could you explain further about why you want to be assessor?
This time, we'll start with Ms. Brown.
Right now, we're currently converting our mapping system from AutoCAD to GIS. It will actually be a true GIS when we're done. Currently, the maps leave our office, go to BCAG, and then come back to the, or go to Chico State, and then come back to the county. I'm trying to make it in a more linear form of delivering information, so we're going to start mapping in Auto, in GIS instead of AutoCAD, so we can start doing, adding more layers and providing more information. We're also working on a project with the Recorder's Office, where instead of property owners having to go in and look up their document number, they can just go in and click on a map, and every recorded document will be shown on that property. So that's a project that we're planning for the future. Right now, I'm currently updating 16,000 files to allow us to more fully utilize our computer system. There was a program that was not purchased by the previous administration that is now available to us for free, so I'm changing records to allow us to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Yes, the reasons I'm running are largely technology deficiencies in the office right now. I mean, GIS is a proposed solution for 2019. My opponent celebrated adding a refrigerator to the Paradise office as a considerable technology upgrade, and that just, we're not in the bake sale land at this point. So, we need to work with the state legislature to finance tech upgrades, and that is readily available to, to assessor's offices throughout the state. Following the rules, forcing taxpayers to appeal baseless challenges is outrageous, and so we need to follow the rules and hold our elected officials accountable. So, the level of customer service that we're not providing in these cases is extreme. Staffing, there's no weekly or monthly trainings where staff get together and talk about their individual cases. I did appreciate, even in today's meeting, the Assessment Appeals Board hearing that there were many more employees present at that, at least it appeared to be encouraging training. And ethical and managerial failures within the office as well, I'd like to fix.
Thank you. Now, we'll have a question from the League of Women Voters.
When an assessment is challenged, what steps are done to assure fairness?
Mr. Stone, we start again with you.
It's probably a question of the way they are now or the way they're supposed to be. In March, there was a taxpayer who was, came before the Assessment Appeals Board, again, I'm one of the three arbiters in the county, and there were three rule violations for the assessment, and the taxpayer was not just your average Joe. As it turned out, he was a Sutter County Assessor Attorney, and he challenged the appraisal because it was baseless, and the, the assessor's office continued to challenge that taxpayer, including restating the challenging, and in my interpretation, attempting to retry the hearing without contacting the taxpayer for the hearing, which is a violation of due process. I mean, they just could not stand this, this type of behavior, and that's somebody that knew better. The average Joe doesn't know. The average taxpayer doesn't have any idea whether they're being overcharged or undercharged and what the appeals process is. We're in, in lush times right now. When those Prop 8s, as the market turns, continue to decline, we will continue to see problems with the staffing in this office.
Thank you.
The process for appaling a value is the applicant files an appeal. We look at the value, we compare that to their value to what we have, we look at comparable sales, and if the value needs to be reduced, we reduce it. Currently, since 2007, the, there's been almost 5,300 appeals filed. 85% of those were settled by stipulation, 5% were no-shows, so only 10% even made it to the Appeals Board. The case in point for, that Mr. Stone brought up, we don't agree with that decision. We believe that they made the decision based on inadmissible evidence and followed a rule that didn't apply. So, I stand behind my staff, I stand behind the work they do. I think we do an excellent job, and we follow the rules and the procedures, even if the board doesn't.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Now, a question for the Chico News and Review, Mr. Ragga.
Test, okay. I always have to test it. I don't feel like it's going to work. I don't know what's wrong with me. Okay, here's my question. For the uninitiated, what exactly is the relationship between what an assessor does and the county's fiscal health?
I believe that's to me, right? We are responsible for funding 70% of law enforcement and public safety. We are the biggest contributor to, of money to the general fund, which is why the assessor is elected instead of appointed, so we don't have any pressure from the administration to raise values when they don't need to be raised or hit a certain target. Completely independent of the administrative office and any fiscal responsibilities there. We do our job. Whatever happens, happens. We don't base our assessments on what the county, as far as what the county needs for funding.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
I could largely agree with that. I mean, that's essentially the way that the process works. However, the assessor's office has nothing to do with revenue. In fact, in the law and, and the position, they're supposed to be constitutionally separated so that the assessor is not making decisions on value in order to determine what the public sector, police and fire costs are in 70%. The 70% funding of the, the general fund, the funding doesn't come from the assessor's office, it comes from the tax collector's office, which is already two steps away from the assessor's office. This, you know, we don't, the assessor's office does not get into questions of, of revenue generation, and quite specifically, that's, that's not permitted.
Thank you. Now, a question from the audience.
Proposition 13 limits the upward movement of property taxes, but Proposition 8 allows the drop below the high-water mark.
Ms. Brown.
Yeah. Prop 13 puts limitations on the increases. Prop 8 requires us to lower values when the market drops. During the height of the recession, we had over 30,000 properties under Prop 8 review. We're down to about 10,000 now because the market has increased. So, as far as the calamity ordinance goes, we did have the first reading of the ordinance yesterday. What it allows for is on governor-declared disasters only. It will allow us to go in and do the calamity relief we need to without the owner having to file a calamity claim. So, it allows for a much more efficient process.
Thank you. I think now we'll go to the press. Ms. Urseny from the Chico Enterprise Record, if you have a question.
Both of you have given reasons on why you're seeking this office. Could you explain further about why you want to be assessor?
This time, we'll start with Ms. Brown.
Right now, we're currently converting our mapping system from AutoCAD to GIS. It will actually be a true GIS when we're done. Currently, the maps leave our office, go to BCAAG, and then come back to the -- or go to Chico State, and then come back to the county. I'm trying to make it in a more linear form of delivering information, so we're going to start mapping in GIS instead of AutoCAD, so we can start doing -- adding more layers and providing more information. We're also working on a project with the Recorder's Office, where instead of property owners having to go in and look up their document number, they can just go in and click on a map, and every recorded document will be shown on that property. So, that's a project that we're planning for the future. Right now, I'm currently updating 16,000 files to allow us to more fully utilize our computer system. There was a program that was not purchased by the previous administration that is now available to us for free, so I'm changing records to allow us to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Yes, the reasons I'm running are largely technology deficiencies in the office right now. I mean, GIS is a proposed solution for 2019. My opponent celebrated adding a refrigerator to the Paradise office as a considerable technology upgrade, and that just -- we're not in the bake sale land at this point. So, we need to work with the state legislature to finance tech upgrades, and that is readily available to assessor's offices throughout the state. Following the rules, forcing taxpayers to appeal baseless challenges is outrageous, and so we need to follow the rules and hold our elected officials accountable. So, the level of customer service that we're not providing in these cases is extreme. Staffing, there's no weekly or monthly trainings where staff get together and talk about their individual cases. I did appreciate, even in today's meeting, the Assessment Appeals Board hearing, that there were many more employees present at that. At least, it appeared to be encouraging training. And ethical and managerial failures within the office as well, I'd like to fix.
Thank you. Now, we'll have a question from the League of Women Voters.
When an assessment is challenged, what steps are done to assure fairness?
Mr. Stone, we start again with you.
It's probably a question of the way they are now or the way they're supposed to be. In March, there was a taxpayer who was -- came before the Assessment Appeals Board. Again, I'm one of the three arbiters in the county. And there were three rule violations for the assessment, and the taxpayer was not just your average Joe. As it turned out, he was a Sutter County Assessor Attorney, and he challenged the appraisal because it was baseless. And the assessor's office continued to challenge that taxpayer, including restating the challenging and, in my interpretation, attempting to retry the hearing without contacting the taxpayer for the hearing, which is a violation of due process. I mean, they just could not stand this type of behavior. And that's somebody that knew better. The average Joe doesn't know. The average taxpayer doesn't have any idea whether they're being overcharged or undercharged and what the appeals process is. We're in lush times right now. When those Prop 8s, as the market turns, continue to decline, we will continue to see problems with the staffing in this office.
Thank you. The process for appaling a value is the applicant files an appeal. We look at the value. We compare that to their value to what we have. We look at comparable sales, and if the value needs to be reduced, we reduce it. Currently, since 2007, there's been almost 5,300 appeals filed. 85% of those were settled by stipulation. 5% were no-shows, so only 10% even made it to the appeals board. The case in point for that Mr. Stone brought up, we don't agree with that decision. We believe that they made the decision based on inadmissible evidence and followed a rule that didn't apply. So, I stand behind my staff. I stand behind the work they do. I think we do an excellent job, and we follow the rules of the procedures, even if the board doesn't.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Now, a question for the Chico News and Review, Mr. Ragga.
Test. Okay. I always have to test it. I don't feel like it's going to work. I don't know what's wrong with me. Okay, here's my question. For the uninitiated, what exactly is the relationship between what an assessor does and the county's fiscal health?
I believe that's to me, right? We are responsible for funding 70% of law enforcement and public safety. We are the biggest contributor of money to the general fund, which is why the assessor is elected instead of appointed, so we don't have any pressure from the administration to raise values when they don't need to be raised or hit a certain target. I'm completely independent of the administrative office and any fiscal responsibilities there. We do our job. Whatever happens, happens. We don't base our assessments on what the county, as far as what the county needs for funding.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
I could largely agree with that. I mean, that's essentially the way that the process works. However, the assessor's office has nothing to do with revenue. In fact, in the law and the position, they're supposed to be constitutionally separated so that the assessor is not making decisions on value in order to determine what the public sector, police and fire costs are in 70%. The 70% funding of the general fund, the funding doesn't come from the assessor's office. It comes from the tax collector's office, which is already two steps away from the assessor's office. This, you know, we don't -- the assessor's office does not get into questions of revenue generation, and quite specifically, that's not permitted.
Thank you. Now, a question from the audience, and we'll start with you, Mr. Stone. You don't get a break when there's just two of you, you know? Thank you.
What happens when I add square footage to my property?
Well, if you're going to add square footage to an individual property, a residential property, that doesn't change the appraisal of the entire property, just the new add-on. So, as an example, from the Assessment Appeals Board hearing, it was at least alleged today that 120 or 130 square feet just magically appeared into -- this is not a function of the assessor's office. This was a case that we were hearing earlier today. And so, just that section that was added on would have been, in that case, the 120 or 130 feet would have been reassessed. That wasn't what happened in the assessor's case earlier today. And I also want to -- well, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Ms. Brown.
When square footage is added to a property, we look at the fair market value of what was added. We don't change the assessment on the land or the existing improvements. Then, the value of the new construction is added to the existing value. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. I think now a question from the League, and we'll start with you, Ms. Brown, after the question is read.
There is a marked difference between the county assessor's valuation and online websites like Zillow. Why?
That's a really simple question. When, with sites like Zillow, everything is added in and averaged. Appraisal is not an average, and so there's no way for Zillow to take into consideration things like pools, views, all of those kind of things, differences in land. All of those things are settled out in appraisal, but in sites like Zillow, it's -- everything is in, so it doesn't matter if your house is a shack or a castle. It all gets thrown into the mix, and a value gets spit out based on just pure square footage. And so, the subjective qualities of appraisal are not present there. So, it's very, very easy for Zillow to be a completely different value than our appraised value.
Mr. Stone.
Perfect answer. She's exactly right. I also mentioned my students that are using LoopNet and Zillow to report with their assignments the values, and I explained to them as well exactly that, that Zillow is not a reliable resource for evaluation. I also want to mention, you know, going back to that case that Ms. Brown mentioned, you know, the Assessment Appeals Board voted unanimously by statute that that appraisal should have never appeared before the Assessment Appeals Board, by statute unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have a question from the audience, and Mr. Stone, after it's read, you'll go first.
What are your thoughts on split role and Proposition 60? Perhaps you could give us some background on both of this.
Certainly. So, the split role is splitting residential and commercial properties for Proposition 13 property tax cap purposes. So, the suggestion is to eliminate commercial exemptions for Proposition 13, and you're splitting between residential and commercial. It's a revenue generator for property taxes, and I think it's inappropriate for an assessor to, again, be evaluating revenue-based issues. Even though that would directly impact the assessor's office, I pledge to staunchly uphold Proposition 13 property tax caps.
Ms. Brown.
There was a current proposal that's been put off until 2020 for a split role for commercial properties to be split out. With that, there was an exemption of $500,000 for personal property. That would have wiped out most of my unsecured roles, so any gains in value seen by reappraising commercial property were instantly removed with the $500,000 personal property exemption. I think split role is a horrible idea. Once you kick open the door of Prop 13, then residences are going to be next. As far as Prop 60 goes, I think the county did the right thing in not allowing inter-county basure transfers. There's also another proposal being done by the realtors that would allow a house to be sold, like down in Santa Clara County, for $1 million. They come up here, they buy a house for $500,000. Since it's half of their original value, we are only going to -- they're going to transfer half of their basure value up to Butte County. It's a losing proposition for Butte County.
Thank you. Now, a question from the press, if you have one, Ms. Urseny from the Chico Enterprise Record. And we'll go first with Ms. Brown when she's finished.
You both have observed actions that are happening in the assessor's office. What do you see that needs to be changed?
We have a fairly young staff. Most of my appraisers have been with the office for less than five years. We're still trying to train them. It takes at least a year to train an appraiser before they know what they're doing. The property tax laws are very complicated. There's a lot of exceptions. There's a lot of exclusions. There's a lot of complicated and moving parts. And so, the biggest thing we need is training. We're not utilizing our computer system or tax system in the best way. We're working on that, but I think our biggest issue is training.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Well, I think the number-one biggest problem in the assessor's office is accountability. When we have these challenges through the AAB, and they're not being addressed and continue to attempt to retry those cases before the AAB, we have a problem. We have additional problems with campaigning within the assessor's office. The assessor ran my opponent's campaign out of the public office using the county telephone number, email, web, physical address resources for the campaign. But training, I have to agree, that's one of the first things that I said, and training is sorely lacking. And one of the big reasons why that staff is so young is because turnover is so high, because we're not investing in our staff. We're not providing them training. We're not providing additional meetings. We're not using our technology, which my opponent just acknowledged as well. These are the problems, exactly as I've laid them out, and over three years, they have not been improved. We continue to go on a conveyor belt with people that retire after a couple of years, and that solidifies the short-term gains perspective of the director.
Sadly, we've run out of time because of the extra-long break we took. So, your closing statements should start now. It will start with Ms. Brown. You have one minute for closing.
I don't even know where to begin. Let's see. We don't have a problem with accountability in our office. We -- I have -- I get more letters of compliment from my staff than I do complaints. We hear biggest complaints from other departments. We do need to train our staff, but we also need to have appeal board members that are fair. We need to have fair hearings there. We need to have accountability in the Assessment Appeals Board and have them follow the actual law. I believe that I still have more to contribute to the office, and as long as I have the support of my staff and the respect of my staff, then I will continue to seek this office.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
You know, I've laid out some pretty specific objectives as to what I'd like to see changed in the assessor's office. I'm glad that some of that is being taken up immediately by my opponent, but we've got a long way to go, and we have significant accountability problems. Surprisingly, with the Assessment Appeals Board, my opponent attempted to remove people for political reasons without -- for claims of false bias, when every decision by the AAB so far has been unanimous, and the chair of that body was the person who attempted to control that out. So, we've got accountability and impostorship through the Assessment Appeals Board, complete and complicit by the assessor's office. So, again, we need accountability. We need technology improvements. We need customer service. We need training, and we need to stop the turnover and the bleeding of staff in the office. It's just ethical and managerial failures. This is not a job that defends the appeals before the Assessment Appeals Board. It is a management job, and that's where we're failing.
More information about these and other candidates throughout the state can be found on the League of Women Voters Edge website. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Butte County and BCACTV, we want to thank the candidates for participating in the forum this evening and thank our audience. You may now applaud.